Public hearing on. My speaker here. This is a public hearing for docket number 2024-0255, Young Brothers LLC, for a general rate increase and also consideration of the Water Carers Inflationary Cost Index and temporary rate relief. My name is Leo Assunction. I'm the Chair of the PUC, and I'm joined today by Commissioners Naomi Kawai and Colin Yost. Also present at this public hearing are representatives of Young Brothers LLC, which will be referred to as YB or Young Brothers, and the Consumer Advocate, Michelangelo. Today's hearing is being recorded and will later be transcribed by a court reporter. Today's hearing is also being hosted on the Commission's WebEx, and a recording of the video and audio will be posted to the Commission's YouTube channel at a later date. As a reminder, for folks testifying in person, please make sure you sign in at the table up front. Our staff will then provide us those who have signed up to testify and will call you in order. For those participating online or by phone, online, there is a chat function on the bottom portion of the WebEx platform. So just go into the chat function and just say, "I want to testify", and then we'll call you in the order that we have people signed up for such, to testify if you're going to testify online. For those on the phone, hold on for a little while. We'll get to you folks after the people in person and then those online via WebEx, and then we will get to those on the phone if there are any. YB's requests are described in more detail in the hearing notice published on March 17, 24, and 31st, as well as April 6, yesterday, in the Honolulu Star advertiser. And also in YB's application filed on October 15, 2024, and YB's motion for a temporary rate relief filed on February 7, 2025. Generally, YB is requesting the Commission approve the following: For the general rate case, a revenue increase, a rate increase of $26,368,923, or 27.06% increase over revenues at present rates for the 2025 test year, based on the rate of return on rate base of 10.92%. You are also requesting tariff changes, changes to YB's existing Young Brothers Local Freight Tariff #5-A, including without limitation changes to its commodity rates. You are also requesting permanent rates that will allow YB an opportunity to earn a fair rate of return on its investments within the timeframe as stipulated by the parties. For the Water Carers Inflationary Cost Index, YB is requesting an automatic annual rate adjustment tied to the annual percentage change in Gross Domestic Product Price Index, non-food, non-energy, of the United States Bureau of Economic Analysis, capped at 5% per year. And for the temporary rate increase, though YB initially requested temporary rate relief in two steps, with the first step by April 1, 2025, of 20%, and the second step by July 1, 2025, of additional 5%, applied equally to all regulated cargo rates on March 25, 2025. Hold on. Applied equally to all regulated cargo rates. However, on March 25, 2025, YB filed a supplement indicating that instead of a two-step temporary rate increase, it was now requesting a single-step increase of 25%. YB is also asking for other relief as may be just and reasonable under the circumstances. The purpose of this hearing is for the Commission to take testimony, not to answer any questions. However, Young Brothers and the Consumer Advocate are here. If you have questions for them at the end of the hearing. What we're going to do, because we do have people online that may be asking questions of the parties, once we end this hearing, we will turn off the video and the audio recording. The Commissioners and Commission staff will leave the room, except for our staff that's handling WebEx logistics and closing the hearing room and building at the end of the night. And we'll ask representatives of YB and the Consumer Advocate to come up here where with the Commissioners are sitting to answer any questions that the public may have. When this question and answer period ends, our staff that's remaining in the hearing room will close out that question and answer period, and we will ask everyone to leave because we also need to lock up the whole building. And so if you want to continue any more discussions, you can take that outside onto the sidewalk. So the scope of the public hearing, as I mentioned earlier, is limited to the issues listed at the outset of the hearing and that are included in Young Brothers' application and motion for temporary rate relief. Ground rules for testifying tonight. Young Brothers will be given eight minutes to discuss its application and motion for temporary rate relief. The Consumer Advocate will also be given eight minutes to explain its role in the process and present any testimony. All other testifiers will have three minutes to present testimony at this hearing. Testifiers, please note that you may not give all or any portion of your allotted time to another testifier. And you may also submit comments in writing to the Commission by email or by regular mail. Please reference docket number 2024-0255, and you may email your comments to puc@hawaii.gov, or you could mail them to our offices at 465 South King Street, Room 103, Honolulu, Hawaii, 96813. Or you may also see our staff at the signing table, and we'll also put that information into the chat for those who are online and wanting that information. If you testify this evening at the beginning of your testimony, please identify yourself, state whether you are testifying on behalf of an organization or as an individual, and state whether you support or oppose Young Brothers' requests. We do have someone timing everyone, and online you'll see a kind of like a countdown timer on your screen. When you hear the timer go off, and for those when you see the time clock go down to zero, I'll ask you to wrap up your testimony this evening. So let's begin with testimony from Young Brothers, followed by the Consumer Advocate, then anyone from the public who has signed up to testify in person, followed by those wishing to testify via WebEx, and then those on the phone. So Young Brothers, if you may.
Okay. Can you hear me now? That's okay, great. Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, and Commission staff. Good evening. My name is Chris Nakagawa. I am the Vice President of External and Legal Affairs for Young Brothers. Young Brothers is here because it is facing financial distress. Its current rates were first approved on an emergency basis in August 2020, almost five years ago. In response to it, the significant operating loss it's associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. While these current rates carried Young Brothers through the pandemic, operating costs for Young Brothers, like most other companies, have continued to rise in the past four years. Interestate or inter-island cargo bonds never recovered to pre-pandemic levels and are currently declining further. Without immediate rate relief, Young Brothers will not be able to maintain its loans, cover its operating costs, or make the necessary capital investments to ensure safe and reliable services. To continuous operations, Young Brothers has three main requests in this proceeding. First, a temporary rate increase up to 25% to be effective as soon as possible. Second, a general rate increase up to 27%, which would replace any temporary rate increase approved by the Commission. And finally, third, an annual adjustment mechanism established with a cap not to exceed 5% based on inflation that I'll explain to you shortly. Young Brothers' motion for temporary increase of up to 25% will be decided first. It is intended to address a sudden and unexpected financial crisis, including Young Brothers' current default under its loan agreement. The temporary rate increase will likely be in effect for only a few months, until the general rate increase is decided by the Commission. It is important to note that the general rate increase will not be cumulative of the temporary rate increase. Instead, the general rate increase would replace the temporary rate increase. What does this rate increase mean for our customers? Please allow me to give you an example. Currently, the cost to ship a personal, medium-sized automobile from Honolulu to Maui one way is approximately $334. If the Commission were to approve YB's requested rate increase, the cost to ship that same vehicle would be approximately $434. Looking ahead, I mentioned earlier an annual adjustment mechanism with a cap not to exceed 5% based on inflation. This mechanism known as Wiki stands for the Water Carrier Inflationary Cost Index. It was recommended by a legislative advisory group and would tie our changes to the Gross Domestic Product Price Index, also known as GDPI. As a result, changes would be steady and manageable through smaller, more predictable rate adjustments annually. If approved in this proceeding, the first Wiki adjustment would be in 2026. It is not lost on us that a rate increase of any kind can be challenging for anyone using our services. So please know, we do not make these requests lightly. However, we're losing money on our current rates and cannot continue to offer you the frequent, reliable services you rely on without adequate rate relief. Thank you for your understanding. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Our staff, as Chair mentioned, will be available after this hearing to answer any of your questions. On behalf of Young Brothers, mahalo again for your time and support. For those that are here, please drive home safely and be safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nakagawa. Zumber Advocate.
Evening, Chair Assunction. Commissioner Kawai and Commissioner Yost and members of the community. My name is Michelangelo, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Division of Consumer Advocacy in the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, also known as the Consumer Advocate. The Consumer Advocate represents the interest of consumers in regulated public utility and transportation matters before the Public Utilities Commission, also known as the Commission, by advocating for the provision of safe and reliable utility services delivered cost-effectively, equitably, and in alignment with the state's clean energy and climate goals. I'm here this evening to listen to the community's comments and concerns regarding Young Brothers' requests to the Commission for a general rate increase, water inflationary cost index, and temporary rate increase. I won't go through all the details that Chair Assunction provided regarding the specifics of the increase, but the Consumer Advocate will independently review the reasonableness of Young Brothers' requested general rate increases, Wiki, and temporary rate increase. As part of our analysis, we will conduct discovery where we will request data and information to evaluate the company's support for the requested general rate increases, Wiki, and temporary rate increase. Then later in this proceeding, we will submit the results of our analysis and recommendation to the Commission for their decision on Young Brothers' request relief. Tonight, however, I'm here to listen to the community's concerns and comments regarding the proposed general rate increases, Wiki, and temporary rate increases. Any concerns and comments that you may have are an important part of our evaluation of Young Brothers' request. We encourage the public to express your opinions to the Commission and our office regarding Young Brothers' proposal and the impact that it may have on you if the Commission approves the requested increase. This will assist both the Consumer Advocate and the Commission in our work. As we move forward, please feel free to contact the Consumer Advocate's office at any time to share your thoughts, concerns, and questions regarding this or any other utility matter. We thank you and appreciate the opportunity to offer these comments, and our contact information is, mailing address is Post Office Box 541, Honolulu, Hawaii, 96809. Our email is dca@dcca.hawaii.gov, and our phone is 586-2800. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Angelo. Before I get to the public, I do want to acknowledge that we have had a number of testimony that has already been filed with the Commission. So as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, we have four testimonies from the legislature. Senate President Ron Koche, Senator Lorraine Inouye, House Speaker Nidine Nakamura, and Representative Darius Keela. We also have individual testimonies provided by Francis K. Park, Roger Y., David Sofio, Stephen M. Freitas, John Powell, Michelle Vins, Michelle Baker, John Van Vaakitis, Donna Halak, Jenna Seito, Camoelo Akel, Anna Marie Smith, and Joanne Iwahi. We also have about 19 organizations that have submitted public comments. They include Aaron Jefferson, Senior Vice President of DSR Logistics, Paul Olivera, Chief Operating Officer of Lanai Oil, Dave Gomes, President of Hawaiian Cement, Kurt Matsumoto, Lanai Resorts LLC, doing business as Pulama Lanai, Manning Tate, Executive Director of Nalu, Science Education Faculty, UH Manoa, Ryan Kuniyuki, Vice President of Bank of Hawaii, Meli James, Co-Founder of Mana Up, Don Takaki, CEO of Island Movers, Ed Schultz, President and CEO of Hawaiian Host Group, Quinn Vitam, Executive Director of Reuse Hawaii, Ross Amparo, Executive Vice President of Express Trucking, Kyle Lemmer, Waikia Water, Garnett Poet, President of Captain Cook, Ani Kona, Robert Stevenson, Stevenson, President of the Molokai Chamber of Commerce, Nathaniel Oswald, President of Molokai Farm Bureau, Jamie Masukawa, General Manager, Shrimp Improvement Systems LLC, Eric Tenoy and Keiko Aiu, Hawaii Floral Culture and Nursery Association, Amy Miller and David Washburn, Hawaii Food Bank, and Denise Kawano Hikiola Cooperative. So for those who are testifying in person, I first have David Washburn, Hawaii Food Bank.
Thanks for the opportunity to testify. Dave Washburn, Hawaii Food Bank. So any comments today? Hawaii Food Bank is the leading hunger relief organization in the state. We serve individuals and families facing food insecurity across Oahu and Kauai County, providing essential food resources through our network of over 250 hunger relief partners. We partner with our sister food banks on Maui and Hawaii island for statewide support. Food insecurity is a significant challenge in Hawaii, with nearly one-third of households concerned about having enough food on the table. Young Brothers has been a critical partner in our efforts to build food security in our communities, both through their donation of in-kind services and through volunteering. They help us to transport fresh produce and other vital food items from Oahu to Kauai efficiently and cost-effectively. For many families on Kauai and Ne'ehau, the food distributed through Hawaii Food Bank is their only source of fresh foods and vegetables. Hawaii Food Bank leverages its highly valued relationships with shippers like Young Brothers and with local and continental food vendors to yield approximately five times the purchasing power of each dollar donated to support our mission. These partnerships are critical at a time when food insecurity is rapidly increasing. Thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight.
Mr. Washburn, are you supporting or opposing?
We're presenting comments on the issue tonight.
Okay. Next up, Katie Chen, Goodwill Hawaii.
Good evening. My name is Katie Chen. I'm the President and CEO of Goodwill Hawaii. Goodwill Hawaii is a statewide, local nonprofit that services the community on Oahu, Maui, Kauai, and the Big Island since 1959. So we have Goodwill thrift stores on several islands, and we also have community services offices on every one of those islands I just mentioned. So we have approximately 500 employees. Half of them work in the retail thrift side, the donated goods retail business. The other half are in our social services that we focus on job creation, job placement, job education, and training. We could not run our operations efficiently without the services of Young Brothers. We routinely, monthly, weekly, send items to the different islands, you know, between the islands to ensure that the proper level of donated goods to service our stores are always adequate and to best serve the needs of the communities there. And there's no alternative to doing that. And we've always found Young Brothers to be an extremely good community partner. We have made special requests on making sure that certain items reached the other islands in a timely fashion, and they always made sure to do that. And so if you're asking if I am for or against it, I would say what I am here to do is to comment on the critical nature of their services and how Goodwill Hawaii wouldn't be able to operate as efficiently and as affordably as that we do now without their assistance.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Meli James, Mana Up.
Good evening, everyone. Aloha, Meli James, co-founder of Mana Up. Thank you, Commissioners and Chair, for having me this evening. I am officially in support, just so that's clear from the get-go. Mana Up, if you don't know, we are an economic development initiative helping to grow our local product industry. We work with companies statewide who are elevating the brand of Hawaii, who want to scale to global markets and bring in new dollars into our state. To date, we have 95 companies that we've worked with over the last seven years. They represent 101 million in revenue to the state of Hawaii and 1,100 jobs. We have been partners with Young Brothers for many years. They not only support our programs, which are free for entrepreneurs to come in to help solve business challenges and help grow their businesses, but they've also been a very integral part of our statewide companies, that are many of which are from Ni'au Island, being able to source local ingredients, packaging, and being able to, of course, get over to Oahu as a main hub of tourism and industry here in the state. So I would say we absolutely support Young Brothers and believe that this is important for them to be in a financially stable position so that they can have that consistency, cadence, and quality that they've continued to have, as that is very important for our companies as they're moving their products throughout the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. I will turn now to people on WebEx. First person that I see here is Melissa Pavlicek.
Aloha. My name is Melissa Pavlicek. Here today on behalf of--
Go ahead, unmute yourself, Melissa.
It is unmuted.
Hold on, let us do it on our side.
Aloha.
Melissa, try.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Okay. Hold on, we're not getting your view over the speakers. Try, Melissa.
Aloha.
Testing.
Aloha.
Okay, good.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Pavlicek. I'm testifying in support of this application on behalf of the Hawaii Harbors Users Group. Young Brothers is the only regulated water carrier authorized to provide frequent, dedicated, interestate cargo transport in the Hawaiian islands, and they're a vital part of our state's supply chain. We did submit some written testimony, but just to briefly highlight, we want to ensure the continuity and reliability of our inter-island cargo system. It's imperative that we support carriers' reasonable requests for rate adjustments and consider them in the context of the community impacts for maintaining a robust, reliable, and responsive interestate shipping system. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Next up is Tiara Lawrence. And Ms. Lawrence, I do want to acknowledge that we did receive an email from you this afternoon regarding whether or not there was a public hearing on Maui. That was published today. So that meeting is happening on April 30. But if you have any other testimony to provide, please do so at this time.
Aloha, members. I'm just going to wait to the April 30 meeting to provide testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Let's see, who else do I have on here? I think that's, I think that's it, that I have via WebEx. Anyone on the phone? On the phone?
Yes, aloha. My name is Sean Riley. I'd like to testify.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Riley.
Okay, so I'm just an individual. I'm just representing an average citizen. Saw a newspaper article about this and wanted to participate. I just wanted to say that I want Young Brothers to survive as well, but I think passing the cost directly to the consumers is the wrong way for us to think about this. A couple things that come to mind, right? First of all, it's not reasonable for double-digit increases to be impacting the costs of our food and goods coming into the islands. You know, typically, when a utility has a rate increase, it's a single-digit increase. Over time, this allows families to plan. When increases are at this level, it's going to be a disruptive event for most families. They're not going to realize that the cost of their food and goods coming into the islands will increase a high level that they might not longer be able to afford. So I think it's too high of an increase over too short of a period of time for families to be able to deal with. Another thing I wanted to say here was, you know, 2020 to 2025, that's five years. That's not sudden and unexpected. That's a lot of time to be planning for things. So you guys know how business works, right? When businesses are having a hard time with finances, they restructure, they look for efficiencies, improvements of processes. I think that's where we need to be focusing on this problem. Another area is where is the support from our federal government and our state government? I mean, why would the cost be passed to the consumers? We're already struggling here. It's already really hard to live here. We have the highest, second-highest cost of living of the 50 states. So it doesn't really make sense to me that instead of pursuing these other ways of lowering costs and maintaining the business-- and maintaining the business, instead, we're just gonna ask for more money and make the consumers pay. Um, that's just not right for the, the citizens, the normal families, um, in Hawaii. Uh, so obviously, I'm opposing. Um, but I want everyone to know I'm not opposing Young Brothers. I'm just opposing the way we're going about this. I think there's a better way to do this that does not significantly impact all of the families living in Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anyone else on the phone that wishes to testify? Okay, hearing done. Anyone else in the audience wishing to testify? Okay. If that, um, we'll move to uh, close this public hearing. Following the conclusion, conclusion of the public hearing, the commission and the consumer advocate will continue with their review of Young Brothers' requests. The process will conclude in the commission's issuance of a written decision on YB's motion for temporary rate relief and application for general rate increase, including WIKI. Uh, this concludes the public hearing for docket number twenty-two-four zero-two-five-five. Thank you for attending and participating. If you wish to remain and ask questions of YB and the Consumer Advocate, uh, we'll start that at Q and A period after the commission and the staff, uh, other than our logistic staff, uh, will leave the room, and we'll ask YB representatives, YB and the Consumer Advocate to come sit up here so that you can be on the camera so that those online uh, can see you if they have any questions. And then our logistic staff, when they see that that is kind of waning down, uh, they'll move to, uh, kind of close out the, close out the meeting and then have everyone leave, uh, the building. All right? Thank you much.